Please take notice that a meeting of the county legislature of the County hearing New York shall be held in the chambers of the legislature located at Old County Hall, Ninety-two Franklin Street, fourth floor of New York. We set counting on the nineteenth day of November two thousand twelve at five o'clock the afternoon time of the purpose of conducting a public hearing with your public comment on the county executives two thousand thirteen tenant budget. The Erie County Executive's two thousand thirteen tenant budget was submitted to the legislature on the fifteenth day of October two thousand two. Copies of the budget are available for public inspection. The office of the clerk of the legislature located at Old County Hall, Ninety-two Franklin Street, fourth floor of Buffalo, New York, one four two zero two, of New York, November eighth, two thousand two, Robert and Gray, our clerk of the county legislature. We will be asking people to approach the microphone up front. And there will be a limit of three minutes per speaker. Legislative Assistant Shani Andy Steve will be timing speakers. And while I know absolutely no one will need them, she does have cards indicating how much time we got left. And it would be fair and judicious, unfortunately, not such time. We would like to introduce the legislators who are present, starting with Chairperson Betty Jean Grant, Majority Leader Thomas Mazer, Chair of the Finance Management and Budget Committee to the Beholds, Legislaturewoman Marinelli, Legislaturewoman Thomas Lawren, Legislaturewoman Terrence Crakin, Minority Leader Legislature John Mills, Legislatureman Joseph O'Reilly, Legislaturewoman Lynn Dixon, Legislaturewoman Kevin Hartwick, Legislaturewoman Edward Brad. And as soon as channel four is set up. Actually, I will call the first speaker if you want to come to the mic, Allison, Alyssa, I apologize, Alyssa Weiss, Councilman Michael LaCurro's office. And all speakers just press the red button in the middle of the mic stand.
Earl, please introduce yourself and then...
My name is Alyssa Weiss. I'm here on behalf of Delaware District Councilmember Michael Leto from the city of Buffalo. I'm here to read a resolution that's been submitted for consideration to the Buffalo Common Council for next session of November twenty-seven, and it's in regards to supporting funding for Erie County's vector and pest control program. Whereas, the Erie County Executive recently released his recommended two thousand thirteen county budget, which included funding for its vector and pest control program, and whereas its program was eliminated in two thousand eleven, and its elimination resulted in increased rat populations throughout our community threatening the health of city of Buffalo residents, and whereas the program was restored in two thousand twelve, and Erie County has since responded to hundreds of requests for baiting and trapping in the city of Buffalo, and whereas the Buffalo, the budget is being considered by the legislature, and its minority caucus has released a survey asking residents if they support eliminating funding for the county's vector and pest control program, and whereas the county program is one of the few available to most city residents since there are no county roads or parks in the city of Buffalo. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buffalo Common Council is hereby register its opposition to Erie County eliminating the vector and pest control program, and calls upon the legislature to include funding for this program in its adopted budget, and be further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be sent to you to the Erie County Legislature, Erie County Executive, and the Erie County Department of Health. Signed, Councilmembers Michael J. LaCurro, Delaware District Councilmember, and Councilmember David A. Rivera, Niagara District Councilmember. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, another quick note, if anyone has written the testimony submit, they can do so also. Yes. Again, because I probably might make it too clear if the workers please introduce themselves fully when they do sit down to speak. And also, I was asked to mention that the, this is a public hearing to hear public testimony on the budget, and it is preferred that it's not a question and answer period, but legislators are certain that if a specific question, they would answer it after the hearing. And now the next person speaking would be Fran Law, the Tommy Dean Councilman.
Good evening. Sit here. Now that I'm used to speaking in front of such an august group as this, one of the things that I would like to speak to is roads and bridges in Southern Erie County, especially in the town of Eden where we have some issues with the Eden Avenue Center Road, I've been through East Church through the Hamlet of Eden, and feel that one of the guiding lights that are guiding minds of how the government should be to ensure the safety of the residents of the communities, and roadways, safe roadways is important. The condition of the roadways and bridges is something that needs to be looked at on a going basis. And proper funding, money spent for this sort of issue is premiere with me as a resident of the town of Eden, and the security of my residents, my family, my children, my grandchildren. I don't think you could put a dollar value on safe roads and safety of the community. I mean, there's a number of other things I could get into, but that's the one thing that I would like to speak to at this point in time. Whatever we can, whatever we can do to promote safe transportation, safe transit of the citizens through the bridges and roads in this county should be in the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker would be Mary Jean Jacobowski, the Buffalo Erie County Public Library. I would also like to recognize Brian Bray, the Legislative Liaison from the county executive, Michael LaCurro's office, who is also present.
Good evening. This is my all familiar seat, and thank you for your patience today. I'm Mary Jean Jacobowski. I'm the Director of the Buffalo and Erie County Public Library. And this evening, I am not speaking only as the library director, but I am speaking as a supporter of cultural institutions and literacy organizations from across Erie County. You may have heard me say this before, we are at a critical juncture. We are all at a critical juncture, and we want you to know the importance of the collectives that we have developed. From literacy volunteers to young audiences of Western New York, for free to succeed and music is art, the list goes on and on. I've brought with me this evening what I call my magic book. This is over three hundred and fifty partnerships in and amongst all of the culturels that you see here today, that the Buffalo Erie County Public Library and these culturels are working together to leverage our resources. We are sharing our expertise and sharing our love of culture, and we are sharing our knowledge. Together, we are doing great things for our residents, your constituents. I ask for one simple thing this evening. Please support the Erie County's proposed tip increase to fund the culturels, the literacy organizations, and the libraries sufficiently and securely, so that we may all be here and our institutions may be here for generations to come. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Ellen Brackmeyer.
Good evening. I am Mary Ellen Brackmeyer, representing the Department of Social Services, and I am seeking continued funding for our primetime programming. Funding for two thousand thirteen Operation Primetime is crucial for the betterment of the youth of Erie County. Summer represents the time of the year when youth are most vulnerable in getting, to getting in trouble. Being out of school, youth have more free time, and thus there is an increased risk for them to go astray. In addition to help and keep young people out of trouble, primetime funding also helps to supplement the schooling that youth receive during the rest of the school year. In addition, youth are provided nutritional snacks and meals which help prevent obesity and promote healthy eating habits. During the summer of two thousand twelve, we were fortunate enough to provide a total of sixty-six hundred youth with four hundred thousand primetime funding, which was distributed to fifty agencies throughout Buffalo and Erie County. The cost per child was only sixty dollars. With this funding, the Youth Bureau was able to supplement approximately one point three million in total programming. Specific programming includes academic and literacy tutoring, problem solving and team building, cultural activities, and guest speakers, life skills, employment training, leadership building, and supervised recreation and physical fitness activities. A specific example of youth development program this past summer was the multi-service youth program provided by the North Buffalo Community Development Corporation. Over the course of two months, a hundred and eight young people learned teamwork, used words instead of fists to solve issues, and used their leisure time in a structured, productive manner. Simultaneously, fifty-six people improved their reading and math skills, learned how to cook, used their creativity to construct art projects, and went on field trips. If Operation Primetime funding is cut, it will undoubtedly have a negative impact on youth from every legislative district in Erie County. Taking funding away, youth will no longer have access to activities that have the power to keep them off of the streets and in healthy, productive settings. Further, the services that our past and currently funded agencies provide are invaluable in terms of developing young people's bodies, minds, and spirits, and discouraging possible at-risk behaviors. One cannot put a price tag on the future success of county's youth, which is directly related to the future success of our county. Thank you.
You're actually going to do what we've done in the past, when we have one speaker speaking, we're gonna ask the next two speakers to come and sit right behind us so we speak things along a little bit. The next speaker is Pat Mann, the Mayor of Kenmore. We also would then have Jennifer Westerhold and Randy Kramer. And while people are taking their places, we'd also like to recognize the presence of Controller Alex Katanahalo. All right then, the next speaker would be Jessica, or Tom, sorry, Jennifer Westerhold, my office.
Thank you for allowing me to share some thoughts on the proposed Erie County budget and its impact on the Buffalo and Erie County Public Library system. My name is Jennifer Westerhold, and I am the Director of Marketing and Development at Literacy New York, Buffalo, Niagara, formerly Literacy Volunteers. My organization proudly provides literacy services to adults and children in Western New York, an area where nearly one-third of residents are functionally illiterate, meaning that they read at a fifth grade level or below. I will repeat that. Thirty percent of adult residents in Western New York cannot read at or above a fifth grade level. Our vision and mission are similar to those of the Buffalo and Erie County Public Library, and our everyday work is concurrent. Our efforts focus on promoting and reinforcing literacy initiatives throughout the community, and to enrich the lives of our residents by providing additional education and professional opportunities. Literacy New York, Buffalo, Niagara is fortunate to partner with the library system and benefits each day from its very existence and plentiful resources. Our volunteer tutors meet every day, year-round, with adult students at nearly every branch in Erie County. Cuts to funding for operational hours would severely hinder the efforts being made to break the intergenerational cycle of poverty and illiteracy in our area. That's something that we, as responsive and responsible citizens, absolutely cannot avoid. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy Kramer. I'm the Chairman of the Art Services Initiative Board, and also a spokesperson for the Great Local Cultural Alliance. I'm here to speak on behalf of County Executive Paul LaCurro's proposed five point five million dollar op-
Well, the arts are a flourishing part of this community, and one of the critical tools that developers and entrepreneurs are using to create new opportunities for all of us. And it's truly all of us, from Springville Center for the Arts to Almazew Museum on Buffalo's West Side, from Amherst Musical Fair to East Wars Roycroft Campus, from Lancaster's Hall House to Locust Street Neighborhood Art Classes in Buffalo's Fruitvale, from the Orchard Park Corral to the African American Cultural Center in Buffalo's East Side, and of course, many other area of organizations such as the El Rey Knox Art Gallery, the Philharmonic Hall, Wells Contemporary Art Center, and so many more. All of us are impacted by arts organizations in our towns that are funded by Erie County. I also look at an investment for benefits that I may not even be able to predict when I first made that investment. As it happens, today, Fox News came out, Fox News, that liberal bastion of news, came out and named the top four U.S. revival cities. Buffalo was one of them. The first thing they talked about, the first thing Fox News talked about was the architecture. Well, we're looking at this budget for culturels at Mezzadore Martin House, Great Cloud, the Hall House, Roycroft Campus, and the Michigan Street Preservation Court. Second thing they talked about was small galleries, artist run spaces like Big Orbit, Almazew, Squeaky Wheel, Western New York Artist Group, Knox and I, the Napquack. The sixth photo was Lafayette Hotel. They didn't take a photo of the Marriott, or the Hyatt, or the Hilton, or the Holiday Inn, they took a photo of the Lafayette Hotel because of the intrinsic value of the arts in that. Finally, the seventh photo was where the Western New York Book Arts Center, let's write it, a national publication touting the Western New York Book Arts Center, which just happens to be a first-time recipient for cultural funding in this budget. They also happen to be very close to just Buffalo, Seepaw Road, West Trail, Irish Classical, and the Galilei Theaters. In closing, much like the county roads we use, the county services we utilize, the county parks we visit, the arts are in all of our communities. An investment in them, an investment that returns a much greater amount economically than it costs us, should never be marginalized or used for political maneuvering. To do so only diminishes one of our great regional assets and one of the true keys to our community's revitalization and rebirth. Thank you.
The next speaker would be Lori Dean Terrell, followed by Todd Kanaiso and Jan Cas- Castell, and you can use both the phones. Okay, it appears Lori Dean Terrell's not here, so the next speaker, our third speaker would be Hannah Ryan, and Mr. Kanaiso.
Thank you. To follow up on what Randy was saying, he talked a little bit about some of the impacts of the cultural sector of Erie County. Economic development, cultural heritage tourism, job creation, quality of life, education, free low-cost services in underserved communities, both in the urban center and rural areas, a growing national and international reputation, attraction of the creative class to our emerging job quarters, developments such as Canal Side, leaving with culture, using cultural programming to build on their success, and the return on investment that Randy mentioned. I now want to talk about the importance of county funding to the cultural sector, because this is a key piece of our funding. Many state, federal, and out-of-area foundation grants specifically ask about support from local government. Erie County funding allows us to leverage additional grants and bring that money back to Erie County, over seven million dollars for the five million invested. The stringent process we go through to get county funding acts as a sort of seal of approval of our management and financial practices, which gives confidence to potential individual and corporate leaders. County funding is one of the few that allows for general operating use, a key piece of our operations, as most other grants are for programming only. So county funding is a key piece of the puzzle. But while the investment Erie County makes in the cultural sector is significant, it is not a significant part of our budgets. In most cases, it's under twenty percent of the total, in a lot of cases, less than ten percent, and in cases where it is high, it's often because the organization provides its services for free, or serves a community that cannot afford to pay full price for quality services. In conclusion, the cultural sector serves every part of Erie County and its citizens, as well as those visiting our area. We are a wise investment, and one that is profitable for the county, as Randy said. And I also want to note that all but one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars of the cultural funding was already in the county budget prior to the proposed tax increase. So while there were many factors that led to the proposed tax increase, we account for less than two percent of new expenses in the two thousand thirteen proposed budget. And that one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars leverages an investment in fourteen quote-unquote "new organizations." But those organizations like the Orchard Park Corral, Botanical Gardens, the Buffalo Music Hall of Fame, and the Western New York Book Arts Center, none of which are new organizations, they've been providing quality services. This is the first time the county's being asked to invest in them. So we support the entirety of the county funding proposal for arts and culture. We would ask you to preserve that, sustain that, and partner with us in making this community great. Thank you.
The next speaker would be Elaine Panty and Mike King.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the Buffalo Harmonic Orchestra. My name is Jan Cas- Castell, and I am a musician with the BPO. I joined the orchestra in the fall of two thousand and one, having previously lived and worked in Boston, Massachusetts, and Baltimore, Maryland. Like myself, the musicians of the BPO hail from all parts of the country and the world, attracted to Buffalo by the BPO's artistic accolades and reputation for musical excellence. Each of our musicians is selected by an audition process that regularly brings over a hundred candidates for a single opening in the orchestra. Needless to say, our musicians are talented, dedicated professionals, and represent the finest of our profession, and we have chosen to make Buffalo our home. Our music can be heard around the globe on frequent radio broadcasts and our many recordings, which have received critical acclaim and recognition, including two Grammy Awards. Although I value the BPO's role as a cultural ambassador for our city and region, our biggest and most important impact is here at the local level, both culturally and economically. Last year, a hundred and eighty-six thousand people attended our performances, including our youth and education concerts, which reached over forty thousand schoolchildren. We regularly partner with local organizations such as the African American Cultural Center, the West Side Connection, Maglia Ballet, Shades, UB, Genesee Community College, Buffalo State, and more. Our programming offers something for everyone, from classics to pops, rock shows, Broadway shows, and family programming. The BPO's community impact extends beyond climax musical. Our musicians are very active in the community, teaching, performing, and volunteering with other musical organizations such as the Chamber Music Society, the Community Music School, and the Buffalo City Strings. Many of our local universities and colleges have BPO musicians on faculty. Whether at church, a private lesson, a memorial service, a community center, or the library, most likely you've heard a musician of the BPO in the community. Now for some quick numbers. The Buffalo Harmonic Orchestra supports a hundred full-time jobs and three hundred part-time jobs with a combined payroll of seven point seven million dollars. We decide that Erie County needs owned homes and paid property taxes. When people come to a BPO concert, they visit our restaurants, shops, and bars. We're a magnet for an economically vibrant environment. The organization, Americans for the Arts, measures the BPO's annual economic impact in our community at over twenty-five million dollars. Ninety-two percent of our ten million dollar budget stays in Western New York. I live in the city and love it here. I own a home in the city, I have two wonderful young children attending public schools, and I want the best for our community. Supporting the BPOs in investment in Erie County, we create jobs, attract talented professionals, and give back to the community, and return dividends on your investment. Though somebody asks whether we should invest in the arts, I ask you, how can we afford not to? Thank you for your support.
I'm told that Lori Dean Terrell is here.
I'm sorry?
I want to speak to Lori Dean Terrell. We had called you, but I guess you're here now? Oh, I'm sorry, you're back, I'm sorry. If you don't mind, she's here.
Okay, sure. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry I was delayed. I'm Lori Dean Terrell, co-chair of the Greater Buffalo Cultural Alliance. GBCA's goal since its inception has been to take a proactive, positive stance in positioning arts, culture, and creativity as critical community assets in priority areas for public and private investment and engagement. Our ultimate goal is long-term, a community that fully values arts and culture and the integral role we play in our region's future. Erie County's investment in cultural funding is an essential investment in organizations that comprise a top county strength, a key competitive asset. Erie County's cultural organizations comprise a vibrant community asset which supports everything from quality of life to tourism. Erie County's cultural funding has helped create this vibrant asset through a long history of providing cultural funding support, and it's essential that Erie County continue to play a meaningful role in the diversified funding support necessary for these organizations to survive and thrive. Your support of county cultural funding, as put forward in the county executive's proposed budget, demonstrates enlightened visionary leadership. It is in keeping with historic commitments which have helped create this vitality, and is strongly linked to the quality of life, twenty-first century competitiveness, and new possibilities. Your investment is in line with our community's priorities as well. Erie County's arts and cultural organizations, small, medium, and large, have widespread support across Erie County, across all legislative districts. This is in no way a subsidy to a largely Buffalo-based cultural enterprise, but rather a wise and considered investment in organizations that draw their audience, staff, board members, and participants from throughout the city and throughout Erie County, including, again, the districts of every legislator, and the benefits that accrue throughout Erie County. Your support of funding for our cultural organizations is a wise investment that will pay tangible dividends back to Erie County, and this is demonstrated across many dimensions, including visitors, audience, grants leveraged, national and state profile, economic vitality, community vibrancy, and quality of life. These fifty-three organizations together comprise an ecosystem which is vibrant, and again, a key factor in everything from quality of life to tourism. Erie County cultural funding has helped create this vibrant sector through its long history of providing support, and it is essential that Erie County continue to play this meaningful role to help the organizations survive and thrive. So tonight, we ask and urge your support, your continued support, and your support of the proposed five million, five hundred and seventy thousand dollar commitment that has been proposed and put forward in the county budget. Thank you very much.
My name is Elaine Panty. I'm Assistant Trustee of the Erie County Public Library Council. I've been on the board since January eighth. Funding for library services is critical. Should funds continue to be cut back, we will continue a slow, boundless spiral. Should funds continue to be cut back, we will continue a slow, boundless spiral. Then the system that we now know will be the shadow of what we have. Service, staff, and hours cut down will affect not only our patients, but your constituents. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to all of you and express my concerns. And it's nice to see you all again, because I see you so many other times. Thank you.
Mike King, Mr. Speaker.
Good evening, my name is Michael Cambridge. I'm the Director of the Buffalo Public School Library System. I am here representing Buffalo and Erie County Public Libraries, as well as Buffalo Public Schools. Across the educational landscape, students and professionals are expected to meet the necessary requirements of information and technological expertise that are applied throughout school systems and the workforce. These skills are required throughout the life of an individual and are no longer customarily to be mastered solely in schools. There are many opportunities in which support and instruction can be utilized to promote continuous achievement, and public libraries are on the forefront as a vital resource with services, programs, and instruction that they provide to all learners. Unfortunately, libraries seem to be losing out in the funding battles, due in part to the mistaken belief that they are somehow anachronistic and age when so many Americans have instant computer access through the internet. This threatens to destroy a network of public assets that remains critical to our community. The research evidence programmatic offerings and newest impact studies demonstrate the critical role public libraries play throughout the statewide educational system. Proof of this can be noted in the following areas. In regards to early childhood learning opportunities, the role that public libraries play in early childhood development cannot be overlooked. As library programs, instruction, and materials may often be the only opportunities children have for exposure to important skills before they enter school. Public libraries offer a variety of programs for early learners that are aimed at developing their individual capacity, teaching necessarily early literacy skills, and providing information to help parents and caregivers lend vital support. In regards to information and digital literacy, these are important skills for all students in 21st century learning environments. According to the 2010 release of the National Broadband Plan, roughly 1/3 of the population lack broadband internet connection in their homes, making public library services a central fulfilling this void. In regards to summer learning opportunities, without regularly attending school this summer, students of all ages may lack exposure to reading, writing, and learning opportunities that are necessary to achieve, to overcome achievement gaps, but to prepare them for the grade ahead. Public libraries provide access and programmatic opportunities that are essential for retention and engagement during summer months. In regards to supporting underrepresented populations, public libraries take on valuable roles in supporting underrepresented populations, including English language learners, socio-economically disadvantaged students, and students with disabilities. Public libraries offer instruction, access to resources and technology, and programs to help these populations succeed. In regards to lifelong learning, public libraries have been highly regarded as institutions since their designation as a location that all community members can use to their advantage, regardless of economic or demographic background. Public libraries serve as a common meeting space for interest groups, students, and businesses, and they play an integral role in the assimilation of immigrants into communities and act as a hub for job seekers. In conclusion, the effectiveness of public libraries cannot be overstated. Demand for the services offered by public libraries is increasing rapidly, and in order to meet the needs of all residents, the amount of support provided to public libraries through funding and staff needs to be expanded simultaneously as well. Thank you.
Cheryl Nam and George Oliver. And we also want to recognize the High Court Chris Jacobson.
Good evening, my name is Anna Ryan. I'm Executive Director of Read to Succeed Buffalo. I'm not here to talk about my agency, we don't receive county funding, but I am here to talk about two critical partners that do receive county funding that help Read to Succeed Buffalo do our job. There's a position funded by the Erie County Department of Social Services known as the Early Childhood Development Specialist. This position, created in the suggestion of the Erie County Coordinating Council on Children and Families under the Borowski Administration, was in response to the Columbine High School shooting in April of 1999. The county chose to respond to this position because at the time, it understood that to prevent the kind of antisocial behavior that was behind this domestic tragedy, society must start early and care for our youngest children to the very best of our ability, not as individuals, but as a community. This position has been consistently funded since then and serves the children and families of this community who need it most, the very young children who are at potential risk of developmental or social delays. This position, aidfully staffed by Tracy Banks of the Early Childhood Direction Center, saves the county much more than it costs in avoiding social service, criminal justice, and special education costs. Research shows that for every dollar invested in high-quality early childhood services, we save $7 in remediation and juvenile delinquency later in life. Therefore, funding this position not only supports our youngest children and their families, it actually saves the county and our school district's money, and is the most cost-effective investment our community can make. Over the past five years alone, Ms. Banks and the Early Childhood Direction Center have directly responded to the needs of more than 7,500 children, requiring assessment, support, and service referrals for early intervention and special education. Specifically for Read to Succeed, the loss of Ms. Banks' services would be very detrimental to the children in our care and the childcare providers we support in care of community alignment for reading excellence. Of the 150 children served last year in care of childcare homes, more than 10% of them were observed and referred for services by Ms. Banks. Her services were instrumental in supporting those 17 families and ensuring these young children, ranging in age from 18 to 36 months, received the support they needed most at the earliest opportunity. I'm also here for another reason, another critical partner, the Buffalo Erie County Public Library. The library is an incredible partner with Read to Succeed Buffalo. Together with W N E D., we host a weekly storytime in the East Sullivan Library with 50 to 100 children under the age of 5, and 8 to 10 family childcare providers from that neighborhood. The library has become an extension of those childcare homes, and the children look forward -- excuse me, look forward all week to coming together, having lunch, and learning from a great story told with passion and excitement. This year, however, we ran into a problem. Because the library was closed on Thursdays, we could not have our storytime, participate, and read for the record, which is a national initiative to have the most children reading the same book on the same day. Thank you to Erie County Executive Mark Polenkarz for keeping your campaign promises and restoring a portion of the library funding, but I urge you to help keep the libraries open every day for all our children. I implore you to reinvest the funding also for the Early Childhood Development Specialist position in the Success by Six Act contract as well. Our children cannot develop a level of reading if they are not first happy and healthy and developing to the best of their ability. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Cheryl Nam. Do you remember speakers? You can use either of the two front microphones.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Nam, and I'm the Executive Director of the Western New York Library Resources Council. It's known as Winnie-Lurk, and our office is located in Buffalo across from the airport. Winnie-Lurk is one of nine nonprofit multi-type library consortiums across New York State that collaborate on a variety of services, including delivering library materials, providing information services, and directly to the public through our libraries and library systems, training library staff, and providing a platform of digitized historical materials. Buffalo Erie County Public Library is a member of our organization, I'm here on their behalf. As both a resident of Erie County, I live up here in Island, and an executive that works closely with the Buffalo Public Library System. On several regional library initiatives, I implore the Erie County Legislature to restore the $3.6 million need to restore service hours and quality of programming. While I fully understand the impact that an increase in the tax levy could entail, particularly as a homeowner in Erie County, the negative impact of an underfunded library system is even greater and has greater long-term financial consequences that would be far costlier later. We are in trying times, and we need to provide every opportunity to those residents who need to improve their computer skills that may help them find a better career, or those looking to find a job to support their families, or those who need to apply for social services programs and need access to computers to do so, or those trying to help their child read more effectively so they don't fall behind in the classroom. For many, the only option for residents to access the internet and all they have entails is through their local public library. For many, the only option to expose their children to enjoy reading is through their local public library. For me, that indicates our county libraries must be able to provide increased hours to meet the public demands and ensure equitable access to all services and programs that our contemporary libraries can offer. If we don't provide these services, they will see an increase in numbers of those who can't read, who can't access the computer, and will not be able to get ahead. Additionally, it's important that legislators understand the larger role that the Buffalo Erie County Public Library plays in our region. Most public libraries share the resources freely, as does B C P L. They have an abundantly rich collection, but more important, their collections and services are vital to complement and supplement our region's 21, 2-year, 4-year, and university academic libraries, as well as the many K through 12 school libraries and their collections and services. Academic and school libraries' missions and collection policies are narrow, supporting the curriculum but not necessarily the pleasure reading, their individual research interests, or their personal goals. B C P L's collection fills that gap, offering materials are not necessarily purchased by the other types of libraries. Through this symbiotic relationship with other types of libraries, B C P L is able to purchase the channel and effectively contribute to the educational growth of our children from pre-K to college, from college to senior citizens, but without duplicating what already exists. Let me clarify that providing books and e-books and computer access, information services, and digital collections, storytime, computer technologies, all may be offered free to residents, but there's a cost to provide them. Great library services cost money, but the costs not to provide them may be greater down the road. B C P L is an example of an organization providing primary organization for its residents. $6.75 return for every dollar rate is given. Please restore the $3.6 million to the Buffalo Erie County Public Library so that they can serve residents to the level that they need.
Mr. Oliver, then the next would be Mayor Pat Manning. The someone named Young Audiences, and the Reverend Keith Pierce.
Thank you. My name is George Oliver, and I am here representing the group called ACT, which is the Association of Contracted Libraries of the Buffalo Erie County Public Library System. It seems as though nearly all of the important things that need to be set by my predecessors, but we're fortunate to have them in the case. I am a trustee of the Lower Town Public Library, have been so for over 15 years, and have been through exceedingly interesting times, especially recently with the Central Library. One of the things which is a major concern to us this year is the reduction of the budget from $3.6 million to the $3.3 million, and the $300,000 deficit shows up, and this is what the library is interested in retaining. We need to retain that, we need to get back the $3.6 million which has been taken from the budget, and we appreciate the consideration of that by the legislature. There are a couple of important issues that are impacted by this reduction in the budget. One of those issues is the number of hours in which libraries can be open. So far, we're looking at reductions of probably about 10% in the open hours, and all those things that the other speakers have said about the library are true, but they can't be put into operation unless the library is open. Open hours mean additional staff, additional staff means somewhere higher levels. These people should mind. The other thing that is important to us is the restoration of these, which is a problem that needs to be resolved in some fashion, hopefully, by a realization that we need $3.6 million, and are only scheduled to receive $300,000, we have a real problem on our hands. And this has been a problem for several years now, and the restoration that we are looking for is one which is only fair and viable for the continuation of our services to the public. The Buffalo Erie County Public Library System is an excellent one, and it grows praise from whenever. So I say to the state, to the county legislature, when you're considering the budget for this year, we would implore you to take into consideration the fact that we need more open hours and that we need to restore funding which has been lost in this coming year and prior years. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Chairwoman, Grant, legislators, thank you for inviting me. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Kenmore Mayor Pat Ma. And I'm here to speak about rodent control. The people of Kenmore are proud of and glad to have Erie County Rodent Control Program. As of August, over 175 Kenmore residents have benefited from this outstanding program. As Erie County's rodent population continues to shift worth, this program will be increasingly important asset to my constituents. Rodents carry disease, decrease property values, and are a burden on our communities. We do not have the authority to enter on private property without permission. Rodent control for Erie County, it's just not for Kenmore that benefits from rodent control. Since April this year, over 3,756 service requests have come in from Erie County residents, including 167 from Ambers and 785 from Chittawatta. I know my fellow mayors and supervisors are glad to have Erie County Rodent Control Program on their side. If an individual homeowner were to contract with an exterminator, the costs can range from $300 to $500 per homeowner. I urge this legislature to maintain funding for this critical, non-manding service. And last, this is a county-wide problem, in that rodents are not confined to one geographic location. In other words, even if we had a program, our communities, other communities, could choose not to implement, with threats increasing in those communities and migrating to Kenmore. Also, there is no central tracking of rodent complaints absent county coordination of this program. This is a huge health and safety issue. I want to thank you for your consideration.
Next would be Young Audiences.
You gotta sing, 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 sing out loud. Don't matter if you stay on track. You gotta sing, 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 sing out loud. Don't you dare hold nothing back. Don't you dare hold nothing, don't you dare hold nothing, don't you dare hold nothing back. Don't you dare hold nothing, don't you dare hold nothing, don't you dare hold nothing back. My name is Melissa Kate. My name is Melissa Kate, you know me as an entertainer, but I'm also a teaching artist with young audiences of Western New York.
My name is Ann Daniels Taylor, and I'm also a teaching artist with young audiences of Western New York. We are here to ask that you maintain funding to the Erie Youth County Services Primetime Program. Young Audiences gives paid opportunities to over 100 artists, and 60,000 students and families receive our services in the counties. The Buffalo Erie County Public Library is our home. In exchange for a low rent, we provide monthly exceptional art programs to families and children in the area. We are here to ask that you maintain funding to the Primetime Program. The Primetime Program provides young audiences with the funds for our first-ever summer teen program. program. This experience provided four days a week for our 21 students. They met at the library every morning this summer. They ate, they read, they experienced each other, and they experienced art in the community. They danced at Burb Dance Studio. They experienced art programs at Western New York Book Arts Center. They saw art at Albright Art Gallery and at Hallwall's Contemporary Center. They took part in theater improvs at Shea's Performing Arts Center. All of this serves not only to create more educated students, but also to deepen their pride in Buffalo and increase their desire to become good citizens, and to contribute and to stay in the city. As an example of the change that the arts can bring in our program breadth, we wanted to read a poem written by one of our students named Brandon in an artistic way in a safe environment who was able to articulate his life experience in this poem. "Change. I was a very smart kid. Back then, I remember when I jumped. The first time I heard my aunt shutting up drugs in the next room, I worried when my brother got shot. I thought this was the life, being locked up and being in gang stuff, but I want to change my ways. I am a very good kid. When I can be, I think that the world could be a better place. I need to get back in school. I try to be a nice guy. I feel like throwing. I forgive my mom for calling the cops on me. Now I can change my life." Brandon, please, please, we implore you to maintain the funding to the Primetime Program. Thank you.
Next speaker would be Reverend Pierce, and following him would be Salvatore Bordenaro and Nancy Churchill.
Good evening, and it's an honor to be able to come before you for this hearing this evening. I'm going to be brief, but my remarks will settle around the checkbook, the checkbook. I am the chair of Erie County Community Correction Advisory Board, and I'm also the retired deputy superintendent of the Erie County Correction Facility. I worked there from 1984 until my retirement in 1997. And sometimes, in order to move forward, you have to be aware of what happened previously. There came a period in 1997 when I attempted to purchase computers and other items for inmates at the Erie County Correction Facility, and I was told there was no money in the budget. Well, we had the checkbook, and one of the names on the checkbook was my name. The other name was Superintendent Fred Metzl. I knew from what I could recall, we should have had at least 300,000 dollars in that account, and that money should have been used for inmates rehabilitation and education, and not to have any money. But I looked around, and I saw employees with computers, laptop computers, take-home computers. What's going on? Because what I wanted to do was to purchase computers for inmates, because the T E E program provided by E O C had been terminated. Also, I realized that 75% of the inmates have not completed high school. 75%. Also, I realized that 25,000 inmates come through the system per year. No money? So I went to the all-inmate, and I had my name removed from the checkbook. I said to Metzl, "My itinerary does not allow me to misuse money like that." Now, I said that to say, I had before me an audit by Nance Naples in 1998. It indicates that the superintendent of the Burton Facility used, misused 100,000 dollars for furniture and computers. Keep in mind, there's never been, not one computer purchased for an inmate. We come to what's going on now. The last audit we have, it states that the sheriff used money from the inmate's telephone account to purchase computers and furniture. So I say to you today, we have a flaw. We almost have a scam. And I call on you to take away the checkbook, put this in the hands of the county exec, the control, the budget department, and have some orderly way of dealing with this. This I beg of you. This I pray of you. Thank you.
Next speaker would be Salvatore Bordenaro, Nancy Churchill Falison, and Richard Zulinski.
Good evening, legislators. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Salvatore Bordenaro. I'm a resident of Erie County, and I live in Kenmore, New York, and I'm going to speak on behalf of Buffalo River County Public Library and the local cultural organizations. Short and sweet, ladies and gentlemen, because you know how long and windy that can be. I just want you to know that libraries are important to everyone. We don't look at color, we don't look at nationality, we don't look at race. Libraries are truly these people's universities. Without libraries, and especially this Buffalo River County Public Library, which is very dear and near to my heart, of which I was an employee for 35 years and finally retired because I could not take the tension and the pressure anymore of finding every year for money for the library, because citizens and residents of this county deserve what we get, which is more money than we are ever allocated. Ladies and gentlemen, I beg to my help. 35 years, I decided, I have had enough. Who needs this crap? I don't need it. My family doesn't need it. Once it affected my heart. Sayonara, everybody. Time to go. I had it, I found this one out, and now I can ask of you. Please, help us. Keep us away from the county legislature every year at this time, because you don't want to see their faces. You know we're here with a cup in hand, and we're beggars? Yes, beggars we are. We shouldn't have to beg, because you should fund us or what we need. Five dollars. Give us some money, what Jim and Sawyer said. Show me the money! Thank you.
Hi, I'm a part-time librarian at Buffalo River County Public Library. I call myself a librarian, really, the operative word is librarian. Can you think of one aspect of living that a public library cannot assist with? We have hard, dedicated, working stamp. Stale was one of us, as you know. But there's been now a number. Expertise is getting thinner, too. We have fewer librarians because of budget crunches, and the communities need us so much more than ever. We're experts. Librarians are experts at helping people figuring out what they need, not what we think they need, but what they need. And the biggest thing is trying to figure out exactly what they needed, and finding information is easy compared to that. Behind the scenes, as Cheryl mentioned, eBooks and technology, that makes things even much more complicated. And there's a whole lot of, if you look at our website, you think, oh, isn't that nice looking? All the work, all the hours behind all of that online presence is amazing. And it changes every day, so keep looking. And as has been said, public libraries are the people's university. They're a common meeting and intellectual space, a pillar of democracy, a community where all views can be explored. Please allocate as many dollars as you possibly can to keep our library system vibrant. It's an irreplaceable community treasure. I always think, what keeps me going, is thinking, I never want to think of the day somewhere down the line, and so I says, oh, wasn't that nice looking? Remember when we used to have public libraries? We can't ever be in that position, even 15 years from now. We might not be physical spaces, but certainly online spaces. Thank you to the legislators for their hard activity, and thank you for the work that you do, and let us know how we can help you. Maybe you need some information, too. Thank you.
Next speaker would be Eric Bond and Erin Bond.
Hello, my name is Robert Zulinski. I live in Clarence Center, and I'm a board member and treasurer of Music is Art. I'd like to briefly speak about the impact we believe Music is Art and this funding has on our communities in Erie County. The impact is not only cultural, but educational and economic as well. The educational impact can be seen in many of our programs. For instance, our instrument tribe has received, prepared, and invited thousands of instruments that have been donated to schools throughout Erie County at no cost to those school districts. Our first student summer camp took place over two weeks this past August. Twenty local students had two weeks of instruction, counseling, and collaboration with dozens of incredible educators, performers, and music industry professionals, the likes of which is not readily available to the average kid on the street. I personally found this program to be inspiring as I watched these kids, not only from the first musical background, but ethnic, social, and educational backgrounds coming together, learning from each other, and enthusiastically supporting each other during the final concert. Many as a result of maintaining friendships beyond their time at camp. And this leads me to what I feel is our important cultural impact. Our programs are designed to provide a safe environment for people from all walks of life to experience the richness and depth of music, art, and expression throughout the county, illustrated not only through the previously mentioned summer music camp, but most notably at our Music is Art Festival, where the variety of acts is limited only by the variety in our population's imagination. This is truly a unique event in where the cultures that produced hip-hop, rock, jazz, classical, punk, blues, funk, roll music, the spoken word, and dance all converge to create a unique event free to the public, to expand our appreciation as a community for our own creativity, and with up to 25,000 in attendance at the festival this year, showing off to visitors from all over the world and as far away as Japan. Finally, I'd like to touch on our economic impact in Erie County. Not only do our events sell out the house at local businesses like Sportsman's Tavern, Nietzsche's, The Trout, and the Town Ballroom, we have also provided a program that has contributed to the renaissance of waterfront in Larkinville. And yet, there could be a greater economic impact. With the efforts of Music is Art and our fellow cultural institutions here today, we feel we're creating an environment where our creative neighbors no longer feel they need to move to places like LA, New York, and Chicago to make it. In fact, we feel we can attract talent from outside the area, and come here and start or reinvent their careers, resulting in more local shows, more local sales, more local residents, and more tax dollars in Erie County. Therefore, on behalf of my fellow patrons of the arts, I request that you please maintain this important funding in the county budget so that we continue to build on these successes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, and I thank the ladies and gentlemen of the legislature for your patience and dedication and attention to hearing our needs. I'd like to share my gratitude in being a resident, a new resident now of Erie County, and an employee in this great county. I served the second director of the Virchfield Penny Art Center from '85 to '96, and then I left to be the director at George Eastman House, the International Museum of Photography and Film in Rochester. And I was privileged to, after 16 years there, to be asked to return, to serve again as the director at the Virchfield Penny. It's a privilege to do so because the center is a national leader in service to its community. Its focus is the achievements of Western New York, and it's sharp and articulate about that. The colleagues tonight have spoken about their vacuum, and they've spoken with clarity about the needs and the services provided culturally in our great county. But I'd like to share a voice now from the outside, what it was like looking in at Erie County from the distance of Rochester, and in fact, from the world. Part of my job was to travel a lot, and in doing so, I was asked often, "Oh, Eastman House, that's in Rochester. Now, that's not far from Buffalo, is it?" So I was playing a makeup game already. It was playing second fiddle to Buffalo. Why? Well, there were no jokes about the weather, no jokes about the Buffalo Wills, instead questions about our culture in Erie County. The books that are written here, the music made here, the films, the theater. Ladies and gentlemen of the legislature, you have a covenant with culture and with our citizens, and might I say, with the world also. I feel privileged to return to the Virchfield Penny, to lead it, to serve and build our culture in Western New York, but to do so with you. Please, please support our county executive's allocation to culture. Culture is how we name and know ourselves. The measure of a successful social institution is the culture that it builds. Ladies and gentlemen, you have here in this room the builders of culture, those who carry our name forward, make life worth living for our citizens, and extend our reputation indeed to the world. Please respect your covenant. Thank you very much for listening.
Next speaker would be Nancy Banks.
Yes, good evening. My name is Erin Wong, and I'm a partner at the law firm, Cavalier D. Cook. I practice immigration law. I dedicate a very strong reason why I can work as hard as I do in Buffalo to the arts, to their inspiration to me. I live in Orchard Park, I get paid as an independent contractor, a partner, and I pay taxes as an independent contractor. But I know that what makes me able to work as hard as I do in Buffalo and stay in Buffalo is the strength of the art community, and I'd like to thank them, and I'd also like to thank the legislature for listening to all of us, not only the artists, not only the artistic organizations, but also citizens like myself who are here, also dedicated and supporting the arts and Buffalo. Thank you.
Next speaker would be Lynn Palano.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Palano. I am the educational director for United Way of Buffalo, Erie County. I bring to your attention the matters of severe consequence for the children and families of Erie County. Erie County Department of Social Services' longstanding funding for the Success by Six program in the amount of $98,192 annually is planned for elimination as of January 1st, 2013. I urge you to work toward reinstating this support, which is essential for our community. Success by Six is a vital service that delivers training, mentoring, help line assistance, and early intervention identification for childcare providers within Erie County. These providers are responsible for the county's 49,000 children who receive care within their homes and in professional childcare facilities. Loss of county funding for Success by Six pulls the safety net out from under the network of childcare providers, putting our young children at great risk by placing them in childcare situations that may be ineffective and potentially harmful. Success by Six is staffed by Tracy Banks, a development specialist from Collada Health's Early Childhood Direction Center, and also by a training specialist from Childcare Resource Network. United Way provides in-kind program support and has invested over $625,000 in local early childhood programs within the past three years, many of which rely on Success by Six services. More than 5,500 childcare professionals within Erie County have received training from Success by Six in the social and emotional development of young children. Within the past five years alone, Success by Six training, mentoring, and assessment have impacted the quality have impacted the quality of childcare for more than seventy-five hundred young children in Erie County. As Ann Ryan of Scream to Succeed Buffalo noted, "For every one dollar invested in high-quality childcare programming, there is an estimated seven-dollar over-reward return for families and communities due to improved school readiness, better academic performance, higher graduation rates, lower crime and delinquency, and decreased welfare dependency." In communities with high poverty rates, such as the city of Buffalo where thirty percent of children live in poverty, investment in programs like Success by Six is essential. Early academic challenges are often related to developmental, mental health, and behavioral issues that have gone unaddressed. When this occurs, young children cannot transition properly to school. To illustrate, within the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year, there were thirty-five suspensions at the pre-kindergarten level and two hundred suspensions at the kindergarten level within the Buffalo Public School District. This is where Success by Six comes in, providing quality childcare experiences as well as behavioral and developmental assessments. Success by Six is poised to play an even greater role in our community's support systems for children and families as a partner in coalitions that aim to improve outcomes in high-needs areas. These include Perry Joyce Neighborhoods, Buffalo Promise Neighborhood, Closing the Heaven Student Performance, and Say Yes to Education Buffalo. Loss of Success by Six could severely handicap the efforts of these alliances and would eliminate the opportunity for the county to leverage millions of dollars in government, foundation, corporate, and private investments in education reform. I ask you to envision what our community would be like without Success by Six. The results might be suspensions by six, absences by eight, school dropouts by senior high, and eventually perpetual poverty. We can invest in Success by Six today, or we can pay later. Please reinstate county funding for Success by Six.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Banks, and I am the development specialist for Success by Six. I thank you for your time this evening. And as you've heard from previous speakers, Success by Six has a lot of data and research about the number of technical assistance services provided, and the number of professionals who receive training, and the number of phone calls to professionals and families, and about the dollars that it can save. But Success by Six is much more than just numbers and research. It's about children, children like Jalen. Jalen is a four-year-old boy who attended a childcare center in the city of Buffalo. His teacher contacted the Success by Six helpline for assistance with his behaviors. Jalen was frequently hitting, pushing, and kicking other children in the class, whether he didn't hit what he wanted, or someone got too close to him, or if he became mad or frustrated. He would also throw himself to the ground, kick, and scream when teachers tried to redirect or guide his behavior. He was not participating in activities, and at times was even aggressive towards the teachers in the classroom. I did say he was four. Imagine that you were a preschool teacher making about ten dollars an hour with eighteen four-year-olds all who needed a lot of adult attention, and Jalen throwing tantrums, injuring the other children, and when you tried to guide him away from those children, he kicks you and screams in your face. This is what I observed when I went to Jalen's class. But I also observed that Jalen was very bright. He had good language skills and excellent motor skills, even though he was easily frustrated and struggled with his social-emotional skills. I worked with the teachers to develop a plan that included more attention for positive behaviors and utilizing Jalen's strengths to help the other children and to help him become more of a helper to the teacher. I also helped the teachers develop strategies to improve Jalen's social-emotional skills by having him identify and recognize his feelings with words and giving him a positive strategy to express his anger. For Jalen, having a pushball to squeeze and a quiet cozy corner to relax in was helpful. The teachers implemented these strategies, and after two months, Jalen's aggressive behaviors decreased, there were fewer tantrums, and Jalen was becoming more of a leader in the class. He was able to remain in that program and was not expelled. Then he went to kindergarten. I happened to run into his teacher last month, and she told me, she spoke with his mother, he's doing well in kindergarten, and if receiving has no need for extra services. Without the helpline interventions, Jalen could have become one of those statistics of young children expelled from preschool. It's likely his social-emotional behaviors would not have improved, and he would have started kindergarten and disrupted the class with his tantrums and aggressive behaviors. The teacher may have referred him for special education services. The helpline interventions for Jalen's social-emotional skills state him from needing more expensive special education and intervention services in kindergarten, but more importantly, set Jalen on the right track for success in school and in life. We ask for your assistance in restoring the funding for Success by Six to help Jalen and the hundreds of other children in Erie County like him. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marie Cannon, and the next following speaker would be Christine Breidenbaker and Nell Moan.
Good evening. My name is Marie Cannon, and I am the chief executive officer for Childcare Resource Network. We do appreciate the financial constraints that the Department of Social Services is presently facing, and we do support efforts to balance the budget. But we however ask, we respectfully ask for reinstatement of funding for the Success by Six program. As it has already been stated, the services of Success by Six are invaluable, but we also see the program as a safeguard for the millions of dollars that Erie County has already invested in childcare subsidies. Part of our work assures that the Department of Social Services is getting what it pays for, quality services to children. The Success by Six project, the only identified professional development program for Erie County, and the only program that supports the child, family, community, and more than six hundred childcare programs in Erie County through direct and indirect services as it relates to the social and emotional development of young children. If this program is lost, a huge void will be created. The disruption of this project will have serious consequences. The bottom line is, parents need quality childcare to work, and Success by Six is one of the programs that improve the quality of childcare. More than a hundred and seventy children will be at risk of being removed from childcare due to social, social, or emotional concerns. Childcare staff typically are not trained to handle severely challenging behaviors, and the program is often forced to terminate services to the child. The child begins to bounce from center to center, disrupting the cognitive, developmental, social, and emotional development of that child. Secondly, the parents are placed under, under extreme stress of constantly having to find new childcare. If the child is accepted into a new program, the parent now worries, "How soon will it be before the child, the child will begin to act out and the center calls me to pick up my child?" As an employee, the productivity suffers due to the childcare issues. The employer suffers because the parent begins, the parent begins to miss work due to the childcare issue. More than six hundred providers across the county a year, which translates into fifty-five hundred professionals, will lose the affordable training and technical assistance, assistance around the issue of social and emotional development of children. The quality of a center is largely dependent on the training, skill set, and knowledge of the staff. This project, project teaches and supports the provider with effectively handling of challenging behavior. More than six hundred providers again will lose the availability of intensive technical assistance and quality improvement, improvement planning to achieve measurable, sustainable, quality goals. We, and we, we ask, we are asking for restored funding to, to the project of Success by Six. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Christine Breidenbaker, from Little Derby. So I live in Erie County. I didn't know I was going to speak, actually. I thought Santiago would be here to speak representing Elbuon Amigo and Latin American Cultural Association. Breidenbaker is not a particular Latin name, even my maiden name is Stevens, so that doesn't work either. However, okay. I don't think any community wants to see empty storefronts. Elbuon Amigo is a non-trapic organization, and if you've ever, if you've never been there, you need to go. When you, when you think of Elbuon Amigo, when I think of Elbuon Amigo, I think of three words, a charm, a character, no, not a character, flavor, flavor and enrichment. So now, a charm. If you go to Elbuon Amigo, and you see this yellow building with clothing hanging in the tree, I think it's charming, I don't know, maybe it's just me. It's gotta be a draw for anybody who comes to the area. It's just so unusual. You go inside, and there's all this, all this stuff. There's, there's things that go on there, they teach Spanish, they have all kinds of things going on there. I don't participate in all of them, but I have been here. And then for flavor, if you know Santiago, I don't know what I'm talking about. He is one of the most generous and charitable and peaceful and, you see, he's just an amazing person. Now, in Richmond, we, we have a lot of Latin people in this, in this area. They need a place where they can go and feel like they're with their own people. I can go there as a non-Latina, and I can feel very comfortable because it's just a wonderful place to be. We have to think about our cultures. We can't just be all blended in. We have to understand that there are more special things that have to be noticed, and this is a place that is noticed. I encourage you to come to Elbuon Amigo, and I of course encourage, I'll help for all the culture. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nell Moan, Director of Strategic Development for Musical Fair Theater, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak to the value of public funding. The support Musical Fair has received from Erie County has made it possible for us to embark upon this, our twenty-third season promoting position of strength. Starting at Summer Fair in nineteen ninety with a budget of ten thousand dollars, we have grown to a million-dollar company producing five shows per season, or one hundred and seventy performances, and playing to twenty-three thousand people each year. Public dollars have enabled us to mount twenty-four world premieres and fifty regional premieres, and positioned us to receive four hundred and twenty-two Art Voice Theater nominations and win ninety awards. True to our mission and responsive to the community that has invested in us, we strive for a diverse menu of shows that are sometimes traditional, although often with a twist, and also innovative and thought-provoking. Last year's annual Q drew students on a younger demographic running for a record seven weeks. Recent seasons have included Crossroad Blues and American Rhapsody, which deal with themes of racial identity and showcase uniquely American music, jazz, the blues, and ragtime. This season includes a play with music but no singing, instead the captivating piano music of Petoven, and in the summer, we will premiere a show that features the songs of independent female singer-songwriters such as Annie DeFranco, Gwen Stefani, and Sarah Borealis. But Musical Fair is not just song and dance. As we have grown, we have branched out beyond production musicals, adding programming that expands our audience's experience and understanding of theater and life. Our Talk Back Series has allowed Erie County residents to learn from writers, actors, and directors about the creative process, to engage with academics about the similarities between nineteen thirties Depression-era America and Charles Dickens nineteenth-century London, and to hear firsthand from medical professionals how the treatment of HIV/AIDS has changed in the last two decades. Strengthened by public support, we are able to employ seven full-time staff, and over sixty part-time actors, designers, directors, technicians, and box office personnel, and to pump back into the region over one point eight million dollars annually in terms of our overall economic impact. Sustained growth has also helped us to expand programming beyond our Amherst Theater to the city's Inner Harbor as a participant in Canal Side, and to inaugurate the re-earening of the former Studio Arena with the region's first-ever twenty-four-hour musical festival. Furthermore, our reach has begun to extend beyond our own geographic borders. In two thousand and ten, Sammy and Me, which originated at Musical Fair, played at the Tony Award-winning Alliance Theater at Allen. In two thousand and eleven, our original production, One More for My Baby, toured at the Little Theater of La Roca's in Colorado and then Rochester. Last December, we premiered The Holiday Guys with Broadway actors Jeff Dunham and Mark Kudus. That show returns to Musical Fair this year and is then going to Signature Theater in Washington, DC, and the York Theater off Broadway. The point is, the county's support of Musical Fair has been absolutely critical to our ability not only to enhance the quality of life here, but to extend a positive image of the cultural vitality of Western New York around the country. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Corey Wolf. I'm the artistic director and interim executive director of Buffalo Arts Studio. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak for you today alongside my esteemed colleagues and friends. The Buffalo News recently published my letter to the editor expressing my support of Erie County funding for arts and cultural, which I have printed for you. And I'd like to take a moment to describe the manner in which I've personally come to know and take part in this rich community. I grew up in the Thousand Islands region and began my undergraduate studies in Rochester in two thousand and two. During my first couple of years there, I made several trips to Buffalo to visit three now Albright Knox Art Galleries and the city's distinguished architecture, after which time I had the opportunity to take courses and complete internships at art galleries in New York City for a semester. In two thousand and four, after fully immersing myself in the capital of the art world, I made the informed decision to transfer from Rochester, not to New York, but to Buffalo as a direct result of the numerous endeavors, art, and cultural experiences, high quality of life, and strong sense of community engagement that I had witnessed here. I enrolled in the Visual Studies Program at UV, through which I earned my master's degree and certificate in Critical Museum Studies. To enhance my learning, I found employment at the Albright Knox and completed several internships at small and mid-sized arts organizations such as Big Orbit, CIPA, and Howell's Contemporary Art Center. These hands-on internships, not unlike those we provide at Buffalo Arts Studio, offer invaluable skills that are not cultivated in an academic setting, but that are essential to understanding the inner workings and workings of a gallery or museum and ultimately obtaining an administrative career. Numerous artists have also benefited from our free and inexpensive workshops, which help them to organize and market their work in a manner that is digestible and attractive to the public, proficiencies that are critical for making sales and financially supporting oneself, but that are not also, that are also not readily promoted in colleges and universities. My position at the Albright Knox inspired me to focus my graduate pieces on biennial exhibitions, investigating diverse approaches to curating these types of shows and examining their impact on tourism, merchandising, and our audience attendance. Through my research, I visited several national and international biennales and was thrilled to be able to put my studies into practice in two thousand and eight, when I was hired by Joanna Antu to work as Buffalo Arts Studio's curator. My first day on the job, I attended the preliminary beyond in Western New York biennial meeting of veteran directors and curators who wholeheartedly welcomed me. Throughout the multi-year curatorial process, I found my preference in my case studies of other biennial exhibitions, and it quickly became apparent that beyond in Western New York and Buffalo's art scene in general is truly unique. In no other biennial, in no other city, had twelve arts, distinct arts and cultural organizations come together to share resources and ideas to produce such an extraordinary event that in turn has had such positive measurable effects on the region, both socially and economically. Having worked at Buffalo Arts Studio for five years now, I have continued to collaborate with these and countless other organizations, many of whom are recommended for funding by Erie, from Erie County. During this time, I have enjoyed the privilege of minimal cost of living, which has enabled me to travel to other cities where these types of relationships among so-called competitive institutions are few and far between. I am always happy to return to Buffalo, where on any given day of the week, my biggest struggle is deciding which of the countless communal and art, art and cultural events to attend, which I now proudly prefer, or sorry, refer to as home. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adair Saviola. I am the Director of Development and Marketing at the Buffalo Zoo, and I bring greetings to the legislature from Donna Fernandez, our president and CEO. Today, Donna is returning from ten days of the zoo animals in Africa. And I just want to say that with Erie County's help, we at the Buffalo Zoo are able to hold our twelve hundred animals in trust for the entire community, so that just one afternoon, a visitor to the zoo can see animals from Africa, Asia, South America, and all corners of the earth. We are very proud to be part of this vibrant and diverse cultural community, which brings great acclaim to all of Erie County. And on behalf of the Buffalo Zoo family and all of my cultural colleagues, I would urge the legislature to please adapt the budget put forth to support the cultural community in two thousand and thirteen.
My name is Dorothy Ferguson, and I'm chairman of the board for the Buffalo Zoo. I was at Erie Community College the other night when Mark Pauline Carras did his PowerPoint presentation, and when you listen to that, it's very... presentation, and when you listen to that, it's very, very evident how hard everyone is working to make all of this budget work. And I just want to go on record saying that the board and myself and everyone connected with the zoo does support all the recommendations. Thank you very much.
Anne Taylor and Gregory Lund.
Legislators, fellow citizens of Erie County, my name is Ralph Salito. I've been a homeowner of Erie, in Erie County since 1974. I'm not representing any organization, maybe just the average Joe out there, the normal taxpayer. I have some concerns with the proposal of the county executive put forth in the 2013 budget. First and foremost, I'm against using any reserve funds to balance the 2013 budget. The county executive explained at his town hall meeting last week that 14.5 million surplus is projected this year, which will be returned to the reserves. Even if this surplus is on target, it still will deplete approximately $1 million from the already small reserve. I'm confident that you are aware that any reserves are critical for improving liquidity. Limited reserves may result in short-term borrowing to solve cash flow issues. Liquidity is also a critical factor for the current and future bond ratings for Erie County. The current reserves, even if we were to remain neutral, is only slightly over 1% of the proposed 2013 budget. We should not be dependent on using reserves to balance any, any budget present or future. The goal should be to increase the reserves, to improve Erie County's liquidity. Speaking about bond rates, this year it was recommended by the county executive and approved by the legislator to, for Erie County to enter borrowing for long-term bonds, instead of using the control board for borrowing. It is my opinion, this was not a financially prudent decision. The net result is approximately $70,000 in additional interest payments annually, and approximately $1 million over the board term, on term. In the days of limited resources, every single dollar is in order. I ask you, legislator, would you finance your home mortgage or advise your loved one to do so? I think not. So don't do it with our money. Erie County will have a need to borrow again for capital improvements. Please use good judgment and be mindful, it is our money. Reductions in savings start with the small things, that specifically, and that those proceeds could, could be used to fund needed services. I've heard, we've all heard, over and over again, that proposed tax increases are only $18 for the, for the average homeowner. At last week's town hall meeting, I was told, the people spend more at coffee shops weekly or monthly. The difference is, that is their choice, not one being mandated by a government entity. Let me assure you, it is not $18 for businesses, which employ us, or take places where we do our shopping. Thousands would ignore realistic. Do you really think that any additional operating business expense won't be passed on to us, an Erie County resident? Even greater, but even a greater negative is that these tax increases could make the difference if a business is expanding, or even chooses to stay in Erie County. If we want to keep and attract businesses, we should be looking at creating an environment that is competitive and business-friendly. That will benefit us all. Regarding funding for organization, I do not have a financial PhD on my staff. As a matter of fact, I don't have a staff. But you do. I cannot speak specifically to validate any of these organizational budget requests, but what I do know, from their perspectives, they want to provide the very best ultimate service for us all. Just read your mission statement. The taxpayers need to be assured that these organizations have done their part to reduce operating expenses, that they have evolved with technology, eliminated duplication, considered closure of facility, or even as simple as reducing utility usage. We need to ask if the service is the right fit for our needs today, with consideration for what we can afford. Does it benefit the majority of the taxpayer or a slight few? Are we in most of our dollars? You've been empowered by us to make these hard decisions, make them wisely. Do the research, develop a budget that is fair and the right fit for today and the future of Erie County. Thank you.
Next speaker is Antu, and following speakers would be Gregory Lund and Jerry Bartado. I apologize if I'm burdened. I'm just gonna sit here my own. Or was it Jenny? I apologize, it's Jenny and Jerry. I'll take my own break here. Um, it would be from the Pendixie Society.
Good evening, my name is Anne Taylor, and I'm vice president of the Board of Directors of Just Buffalo Literary Center. I live in the village of Williamsville, and I vote and pay taxes in Erie County. Just Buffalo Literary Center is one of many vibrant cultural institutions that depend on Erie County for funding. Just Buffalo's ballet series of internationally acclaimed authors attracts enough people to fill Kleinhand's four times a year, a feat which the authors themselves consider astounding. Salman Rushdie drew a crowd of more than 1,500 people, not just from Erie County, but from 12 states as well as Canada. Our educational programs support more than 2,500 schoolchildren each year in developing their writing and creative thinking skills. In collaboration with CIPA Gallery, Writing with Light brings the literary arts and photography into Buffalo and Erie County's classrooms, allowing children to express themselves in profound, perhaps life-changing ways. This educational component is an important part of the mission of many local cultural institutions. Yes, we have audiences who pay for our services, but we also provide programs as a public service for non-traditional constituents, socially and economically disenfranchised groups, and underserved youth, bringing the community-building power of the arts to serve the common good. Western New York as a whole is uplifted and strengthened by the exposure these citizens are receiving, an exposure many of them might not otherwise receive. Just Buffalo Literary Center has many revenue streams, ticket sales, grants, donations, and program fees. We were recently awarded a highly competitive Kresge Foundation National Grant, just one example of the more than $250,000 that we secure each year from outside the area to be spent here. Erie County's financial support plays an important role in our ability to thrive, as it does for each and every organization which has been recommended. I volunteer my time, and I donate my money to Just Buffalo Literary Center because I believe in the benefits it brings, not just to be personally as an audience member, but because it is a community asset, one that is worthy of public support. I urge you to, to support the budget as it stands, as recommended by county executive Pauline Carris. Thank you.
The name may be Bartado, and I'm, my murdering, Jack, not Jerry. Following that would be Diane Strawbridge, Jolene Heffey.
My name is Jerry Bestin, I'm the executive director for the Pendixie Society, which is owned and operated by the Hamburgh Natural History Society in Hamburgh, and I want to thank Erie County for providing the financial support for the society and the other arts and cultural groups in Erie County. Very important here. Pendixie is also a member of the Greater Buffalo Cultural Alliance Group, a sort of a unique group, we're not really an arts group, although we do natural arts. The cultural groups really provide a quality of life, and that can have impact in Erie County and the Buffalo population. The other group, the arts and cultural groups, provide services and attractions for all backgrounds, age levels. Erie County is probably one of the best areas in the country and world, because of, because of things we have here for our citizens. The Hamburgh Natural History Society owns and operates the 54-acre Pendixie, Penitentiology and Educational Center, that's a big word because it's not that difficult, in Hamburgh. And we provide programs in fossil collecting, geology, astronomy, and birding, and the natural sciences. We're kids, and we look at everyone as a kid, as we all are. Children 2 to 102 have a hands-on experience where science really comes alive, where you can actually get outdoors and experience it. Pendixie is the number one fossil park in the United States by two professors, one from Louisiana State University, and one from Mississippi State University, who geologically has sent a publication, special paper, published in June 2011. Pendixie provides affordable programs for visitors. The site has over 4,100 feet of paved trails for wheelchairs, walkers, stowers, and wagons, with thousands of feet of additional paved and fortified trails to be installed when the funding becomes available. Pendixie is really a cultural, recreational, educational, and tourism attraction that draws visitors from across the country all over the world. It's an outdoor education center, we're not really a museum. In 2011, we had 398 Pendixie programs on-site and off-site that reached over 76,000 children and adults. We get thought of as, most often, as a fossil site, but as I mentioned before, we complete programs in fossils, geology, astronomy, birds, wildlife, turkey, deer, and parrot on-site, weapons, and natural sciences, which thousands of students from preschool universities participated in, and thousands of families, scouts, civic groups, churches, mentally physically challenged children and adults visited the site. In 2012, we've had already visitors from 38 states and nine countries, and we have members in 28 other states and in Canada. Pendixie also does exhibits and shows in Potayka, Rochester, Syracuse, we've done some in Cincinnati, many local events promoting the site, Erie County, Buffalo, and I region. Pendixie has many vendors throughout the county, which provide products and services for our organization. Many visitors stay here for several days in the area, using motels, restaurants, stores, gas stations, and other businesses. Currently, Pendixie is in the process of trying to expand our operations, and we need that to get more full-time staff, and also permanent building on the site. We get greatly affected by the weather, which is, happens here quite often. But it's a part of the process, and the sciences. It's extremely important to promote and encourage children and adults to learn more about the sciences. Science education in the United States need to be, needs to be increased, because it affects every one of us every day, and the hands-on thing when you go out and discover something is really unique. Just to relay a quick story here, this summer, I was contacted by a librarian from Erie County, who said, Jerry, we have an opportunity to collaborate with National Geography, WPTV, to bring Lee Berger, a paleoanthropologist, to the United States from South Africa. And he's written a book with Mark Anderson from New Jersey, on how his son, 90-year-old son, two years ago found the skull of a prehominant female, complete skeleton, and also they found a complete skeleton of a young male, and how the discovery process came about, with a 90-year-old child finding this. And in all of his career as a paleoanthropologist in Africa, South Africa, he feels he would never ever have that opportunity again, it's probably the greatest thing in his life, but it's even better because of the 90-year-old son. So they wrote a book, and they wrote a book to say, you know, you can discover things, you just, you know, you gotta get out there. Not everything's been discovered. Everyone thinks that all the fossils have been found in the whole world, everybody knows what's there. It's like when they come to Pendixie, the kids want to find dinosaurs. And I always tell these kids, if you find a dinosaur at the site, I will make it the most famous person in the world. But they didn't come on Earth until 130 million years later. So, but you never know when somebody's gonna find something rare. We had a lot of rare fossil fish there. Three years ago, we had a student in our, or some day camp programs, find a jellyfish here. Now, jellyfish can be found a lot of different places, but it was rare, the only ones that ever come on the site. So, you know, the art of discovery, getting out there and doing the hands-on thing, how, how the challenges and paleontologists and paleontologists go out and find fossils, it's a great opportunity for them. And Pendixie and all the other cultural organizations appreciate the support the county has given to us, and it has made it probably one of the best places in the world to live, and we'll continue to expand. Thank you very much.
Next would be Diane Strawbridge, followed by Jolene Heffey and Edith Carroll.
My name is Diane Strawbridge, and I'm here on behalf of the Buffalo Music Hall of Fame. The Buffalo Music Hall of Fame was founded in 1983. Every year, we honor the vast musical talent that our city has developed. Over the past 30 years, 268 musicians and others involved in the music community have been inducted. It is a deep honor for them to be recognized by their city. In addition, we give scholarships to high school students to be used for their music education. The scholarship winners get a chance to play with inducted members at our annual induction gala, which is held in October. It's very exciting for them to be on stage at a major venue with the best of Western New York talent. Our first scholarship winner, 15-year-old Ellen Peroni, played at Kleinhand's Music Hall as a result of her winning the scholarship. The Hall of Fame also spends a lot of time at different events and festivals throughout the year. Visitors to these festivals are not only from across the country, but from around the world. They talk to us and sign our email list, and take our merchandise back home with them. This keeps them in touch with Western New York, and they are often amazed at how much our area has to offer in the arts. We hope that you will take note of our contributions and ongoing efforts to promote the great talent we have here. With your support of the recommended funding for cultural organizations, our entire area will benefit by offering a wider variety of successful venues for people to spend their time and money. The Buffalo Music Hall of Fame is an all-volunteer organization, and the more resources we have, the more we can give back to the community. Thank you.
Evening, my name is Jolene Jaffe, and I'm here as a resident of the Town Aurora, who also happens to be the town supervisor. And although I have a different perspective and some different thoughts about the budget, I desire the same outcome as just about everyone in the audience here. I'm here to comment on the county budget, just days after completing the Town Aurora's budget. Like the county, towns have been forced to deal with many difficult budget challenges. This is not meant for just one or two years, but I believe it will be for many years to come. Like you, many of the challenges of the town are completely beyond our control. Like you, a majority of our corporations are for union personnel and related expenses. And like you, our goal is to maintain a delicate balance between providing the desired level of service and controlling taxes. Unfortunately, with the proposed county budget I have reviewed online, as I see it, that is where the similarities between the town and the county end. For the average Town Aurora resident, 65% of their property tax bill is for school taxes, 22% is county tax, and just 13% is town tax. For the 2013 budget, the Town Aurora sought a way to reduce spending in the general fund, and at the same time, reduce the reliance on fund balances. We had a tax gap of 2.9%. That is not a free pass for a tax increase. As I've been reading the paper, it's clear that the towns have been doing their hardest, doing their best to keep taxes flat, or as close to flat as possible, but our portion of the tax bill pie is by far the smallest. That is why I'm strongly urging the county executives to look harder, much, much harder at this budget, to find a way to keep the county tax flat without spending down fund balances. As I look at the newspaper and listen to the TV news during these budget discussions, the same few areas are listed as options for reductions. It includes the usual, what I call, political footballs that the residents wire down, including the library, the culturals, road control, and parks, among others. And there are at least 43 departments listed in the table of contents of this budget. I am pleading with the county executive and the legislature to do like the towns have done, and to look at each and every department to find the savings I know are there. If efficiencies in the town government with 50-some employees, we can find efficiencies, find efficiencies in the town government with 50-plus employees, surely we can find savings in an entity as large and diverse as the county. Utilize hard-time labor, share labor during peaks and valleys of service demand, combine departments, buy new technologies in order to be able to reduce personnel. Union contracts go a lot for some of these changes, make sure they do before you reach an agreement with union leadership. Simply put, the towns, schools, and the county can no longer keep pushing the 2%, 3%, and 4% tax increases to the residents of Erie County. It doesn't take a PhD to see that our taxes are a major cause of the mass, ex-citizen people from our region. I believe that it is possible to maintain the service level our residents desire, including the arts, if the county executive and legislature really look long and hard. Is it easy to do? No. Is it necessary? Yes. I know time is short, and I am begging, yes, I'm begging, please go back to the drawing board with this budget. Please start at the top and... Please start at the top and work your way down, department by department, to find a way to keep the services in place. Yes, you are mandated in many areas as we are. However, you are not mandated in how you manage your department personnel, and I know you can do better for our residents. You must do better. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ed Cardoni. He would be followed by Eric Jacobson Forsberg and Aaron Geraja.
Thank you. I'm the Executive Director of Hallwall's Contemporary Arts Center, also an active member of the Greater Buffalo Cultural Alliance. And I think that my colleagues who have spoken already, those who are still to come, have spoken eloquently on the benefits of the arts to the community. So I'd like to speak, first of all, I'd like to say, to talk about something that hasn't come up yet, which is the restoration of the process for reviewing, first of all, for soliciting applications from the arts and cultural groups, and then for reviewing those that's been put together under the Polk Arts Administration, particularly by Commissioner Maria White, is exemplary. It was very responsive, streamlined, it's fair. We lacked a process for the past few years since the E-Crab process that we used to have, and the new process, I think, is even better that's been put in place. And I think that the legislature should be guided by the findings of that process, because it's been an excellent process. I'd also like to speak as, I don't like to think of myself as a taxpayer. I'm a citizen in Erie County, I'm a resident of Erie County. I am a homeowner in Erie County, and I do pay property taxes. I feel very lucky to have found a home in Elmwood Village. One of the reasons that that's such a vibrant part of town and that other parts of town are coming to life again is because of the arts and culture, the museums, the galleries, the small businesses that benefit from all of those, the artists who have moved here. There is, in the arts, there is no mass exodus out of this city. Artists, people working in the arts actually have moved here. I am not from here. I came here to go to UB, and I've stayed here because of opportunities in the arts, raised a family, bought a home. I bought the home very affordably over fourteen years ago. It's appreciated in value. I feel very fortunate that I live in a part of town where values have gone up. And I also improved the home with my own two hands, and it's therefore worth a lot more than when I bought it. It's assessed for even more than that, and I don't mind at all paying the additional twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents that this, a year, that this tax increase would mean for my home. I'm glad to pay it. It's sort of a no-brainer. It shouldn't even be talked about. It's such a small tax increase, I'm happy to pay it for all the services we get. I responded to the legislature's survey. I am in favor of the tax increase, no problem whatsoever, two dollars and forty-eight cents a month. I think I can swing that for all the services we get. I looked down the list of things that we could cut. I couldn't find anything that we could cut, and so I want all those programs supported, not just arts and culture, but all the ones listed there, and for the tax increase to go through. Thank you.
My name is Eric Jacobson Forsberg, and I'm the relatively new Executive Director of the Western New York Book Arts Center. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm very pleased that the proposed budget includes a recommendation for funding for the Book Arts Center as a new organization. Since we opened our doors in the corner of Washington and Mohawk in two thousand and nine, we've offered a wide array of exhibitions, programs, and studio access for a cross-section of Western New Yorkers. At the same time, we're part of a decent revival of downtown Buffalo with key collaborators such as the Just Buffalo Literary Center, which owns our building, the Central Library, in the audiences, and various organizations and businesses on the five-hundred block of Main Street. Just a quick snapshot of our activities, this summer we offered the first annual Buffalo Book Fest, where we welcomed over five-hundred people of all ages and walks of life to the Book Arts Center for hands-on exploration of rich and varied art forms. You can come to this by the century, it's a centuries-old phenomenon of the book, remember those? Including installation of large wood ducks using steamrollers as a press out on Mohawk Street itself. Heavy metal meets fine art, they'd say. I applaud the budget's recommendation of support for our organization, thirteen other organizations new to the county's cultural funding process, and the host of veteran organizations. And like Ed, a homeowner in Buffalo, I'm very glad he paid that twenty-nine dollars in the increase. As you can see, we stick together, we travel in packs, you might say. You care deeply about this process and cultural relationships in Western New York, and we ask you to join us and support us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Curtis Stej, followed by Michael Sheragro.
My name is Eric Geraja. I'm the Director of Marketing at Botanical Gardens, and I have the privilege and honor to work at an amazing cultural institution in Western New York. The Botanical Gardens is a beautiful jewel in this community, and since creating a public-private partnership with Erie County in two thousand and four, the gardens have seen tremendous growth in attendance, educational opportunities, and ever-creative income streams. We support restoring funding to our robust and viable cultural community. It is our hope that at the conclusion of the budget process, cultural funding will be maintained, and our Botanical Gardens will receive operational assistance to maintain our exciting momentum and ensure that Botanical Gardens continues to educate, inspire, educate and inspire our community for generations to come. Simply put, Erie County residents' lives are enriched by our amazing arts and cultural programs and organizations in our community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Curtis Stej, followed by Michael Sheragro and Casimiro Rodriguez.
First, I'd like to thank County Executive Polk Arts for its recommendations of funding the arts and culture from the two thousand and thirteen Erie County budget, and thank you, Honorable Legislature, for your consideration of those recommendations. My name is Curtis Stej. I'm the Operations Manager and also a dance teacher with Eggly Ballet here in Buffalo, and here therefore representing Buffalo Ballet Company, Eggly. We serve over ten thousand individual annually and have been in existence for fifteen years. As Todd had mentioned earlier, in addition to offering high-caliber art, many of our fellow Erie County arts and cultureists provide access to that high-quality, meaningful art, as well as many successful educational programs to citizens of Erie County who otherwise may not have these opportunities. Just Buffalo was recently talking about one such program up here. Case in point for us, Eggly out, this Wednesday morning, we will be hosting three thousand Buffalo Public School children at Chase Performing Arts Center to experience the classic Nutcracker. Many of these students are disadvantaged or at-risk youth from low-income families that, if not for Eggly's City Dance program, you may have never experienced the magic and joy of a professional ballet. And in addition to these on-school time performances, City Dance sends dance teachers into the Buffalo Public Schools for six weeks residencies, workshops, and also offers scholarships to students showing considerable promise. Public School Fifty-Nine Director Charles Drew, Science Magnet principal, had this to say about the City Dance program. I imagine that your gift may have sparked a lifelong interest that they, our students, may otherwise have never found. The wonderful about Buffalo and Erie County is that this caliber of program can be found in many of its arts and cultures, each using their respective disciplines to bring knowledge, hope, and joy to countless numbers of Erie County children and families. In support of these programs, for the future of these children and for the future of our great county, I urge you to adopt County Executive Polk Arts' recommendations for the funding of arts and cultures. Thank you.
Third time, Michael Sheragro. No, Casimiro Rodriguez. He would be followed by Dario Ross, Charles, whatever. T E S. And I apologize, I'm lost.
My name is Casimiro Rodriguez. I'm the Chairman of the Hispanic Heritage Council of Western New York, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to address this legislature by on this week of thanks, and I wish each and every one of you a happy Thanksgiving to you and your families. I also give thanks to God this week because I know that each and every one of you is going to make the right decision to support a proposed budget for the arts and cultural groups. I'd like to, I did not prepare anything or a statement, but I'd like to share some sentiments from the heart. I was a former Erie County Resource Cultural Resource member. At that time, I went through fifty-one of the proposals presented by all the arts and cultural groups here in Erie County. And I was able to read in depth each and every one of those proposals, and I seen the value and the passion that each cultural arts and cultural group had to engage all the communities here in the city of Buffalo to appreciate arts, culture, and theater. It was a passion that drew me to be able to form the Hispanic Heritage Council, where we're relatively a new organization, we're only three years in existence. We were not able to apply for funds through the resource because the threshold is five years, but that did not discourage us to collaborate with each of the arts and cultural groups here in Western New York. I'd like to name a few. We had a very successful Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, where we were able to organize over twenty events and activities to share the Hispanic heritage, history, and culture with all our neighbors here in Western New York. The Buffalo Zoo, the Central Library, the Buffalo Museum of Science, the Theodore Roosevelt Museum, the Buffalo Historical Society, River Fest with the help of Art Services Initiative. We are also a member of the Greater Buffalo Cultural Alliance, CIPA Gallery, the Erie County Development Corporation. All of these entities, we were able to celebrate our month here in Western New York. And I encourage each and every one of you legislators, which I know many of you, okay, that you support, okay, the proposed budget to fund all these arts and culture groups because we've collaborated with them, okay? We share the same passion and the same vision, okay, that the Hispanic Heritage Council shares. And to lead you with this, our mission, the Hispanic Heritage Council of Western New York is to foster and inspire awareness, understanding, and appreciation of the past, present, and future contributions of the Hispanic community in Western New York. We're a ten-member board, a working board. Eight of them work full-time jobs. Two of them are retired, including myself. But our mission is driven by passion and dedication for the community here in Western New York, not only the Hispanic community, but all our neighbors. Because the more we share with one another our arts and culture, the better we get along and a better Western New York. Thank you very much.